Although we're in the City of Columbiana City Council meeting on this December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, I would like to ask Deanne to give the invocation and then we'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we pray that you will give our council members the faith and courage to carry on their duties, help them to do right, to deal fairly with others, and to place their trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
I want to lead the flag of the United States of America and Super Republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deanne, would you call the roll?
Yengus?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
Detillio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You've all received a copy of the December third, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes. Is there any questions or comments on those minutes? There are none will be accepted as submitted. Reading of communications, I would like to start by reading this short communication. Dear Mayor Noel, thank you to the city for hosting a special commemoration of the fiftieth year anniversary of Columbiana's charter. Harry would have been thrilled. Thank you on behalf of the Kavinsky family, Pat Kavinsky. And I received several telephone calls from people that we recognized, also thanking, thanking us for recognizing that group. And on that subject, I have to tell you that we found out that we missed one of the distinguished members of that original commission. And he contacted me and said, why didn't you call me? And so I had to apologize and we have with us tonight, William McIntosh, and I asked him to come to the meeting tonight. He was one of, one of the original members of the Charter Commission, and I apologize that we did miss him. And I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Mr. McIntosh. So you want to meet me at the mic? Well, I wanted to thank you for your service officially, and we up here all feel that this is, what you did fifty years ago was very important to the city, and is probably one of the main reasons we were such a vibrant community to this day. So we did want to take an opportunity to recognize you. And we passed this recognition, a proclamation, and we presented this proclamation to every member or their family member to recognize your work, and we have a list of all the original charter members so that you can have this for your information. And we do want to thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor and council, thank you for doing this for the original members of the committee. It was a privilege to service and I think it has turned out pretty well for fifty years, and I don't hear that there's much complaints about the charter as it was written. Now, I have to say, we had some pretty good examples of other cities' charters, which helped us tremendously even as we were deciding what was needed here in Columbiana. But it seems to me that it's worked out pretty well, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I hope you can stay up a little while. I'd like you to see this, whoops, I got upside down. This is the proclamation that we're going to post in City Hall, the proclamation we passed and that's your copy of it. And here were two recognitions by legislators, and you may want to take a look at that before you leave, and so you're aware that we'll post those probably here in our community as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving to reports of commissions and board. You have received a copy of the planning commission meeting minutes of December tenth, twenty twenty four. And you've also received a copy of the park recreation and cemetery board meeting minutes of November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions or comments on those, either one of those reports? Okay, thank you. Moving to recognition of persons desiring to appear. First of all, I think we have her on Zoom with us. We have Crystal Sambita Boggs to discuss Just a Jog 5K Race, and she's joining us through Zoom. Are you able to speak?
Can you hear me?
Okay. You want to go ahead? You have the floor.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys letting me do this via Zoom. I did not want to spread any germs. First of all, I want to say thank you all very, very much for our "Twas the Night" and everything that the community does to help support that. It was our largest year ever, and we're still waiting on invoices and all that kind of stuff to know exactly how it all settles out, but it was a very, very successful year, and I have to thank anybody in the city that had something to do with that. Looking ahead, we are putting on our Just a Jog Race. It's a 5K, same course as the past two years. It would be January nineteenth, ten o'clock AM, start and finish at Columbiana High School. And I mean, there's really no changes from previous years, so all those details were provided in the application. Does anybody have questions?
I think it's not on the agenda for later. I'm just going to go ahead and move to approve this admitted. They pistol his voice.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve the request made by Crystal. You all have received, by the way, just for public knowledge, she submitted a, an application for this project, so we have that on file. So we have a motion second. Any questions or comments? Deanne, would you call the roll?
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Detillio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Crystal.
Thank you very much. You guys all have a Merry Christmas.
Next, we have a representative here from L and M Greenhouses to discuss future plans. Come forward to the mic, state your name for the record.
Thank you for including me on the agenda and taking the time to meet with me. I do have a packet of information.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Amanda Tasic-Shenton.
Fill the last name, please.
TKA, BIK, and then new word, Shenton, S-H-E-N-T-O-N.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I do have a packet of information for everybody. As noted, I'm here to discuss future plans for L and M Greenhouse. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. I co-own L and M Greenhouse with my dad, Dave, who was unable to be here tonight. We are looking to erect a housing structure to bring in seasonal employment for the greenhouse, as the greenhouse has significantly grown and we are struggling to keep up with our work demands. So just briefly, I wanted to give you a bit of a background business overview of our business. We've really become a destination and agritourism location. We attract tens of thousands of people from both outside our immediate area and locally. I get people who come even from Dayton and Columbus from year to year. And during peak season, we employ up to twenty-five people, and that includes local employees and seasonal employees. As such, we have the opportunity to be able to direct a lot of customers to the local businesses. We're sure to direct them to our historic downtown restaurants, hotels, coffee shops, all of the local things that we all enjoy. We sponsor the Columbiana Street Fair. We sponsor an exhibit at the Joy of Lights Christmas Show. We are involved in several fundraisers with the local schools. We're part of the Emergency Response Plan for Columbiana Exempted Village Middle and High School, where if there were an emergency situation or an active shooter, they would come over to our property and have access to our property and facilities in an event such as that. We are located in Fairfield Township. However, we currently use Columbiana Power and Columbiana Water. We've had Columbiana Water for as far back as I'm aware of, and we do utilize that utility. We spend fourteen to fifteen thousand annually on Columbiana City Water. And as I had mentioned, the business has continued to grow over the past several years, so it is essential to our business and operations that we're able to hire and accommodate seasonal employees, many of whom will be required to work in excess of twelve hours a day during peak season necessitating local accommodations. So I have included a property map in your packet, and the first one, I highlighted in permanent marker the perimeter of our property boundary. And in blue is the parcel that is within Columbiana City limits, and then if you would just note the right-of-way straight out to Duquesne Street there, but that provides a comprehensive overview of our property there at L and M. We originally approached the zoning inspector and city manager to erect housing, this housing structure on the parcel of land within Columbiana City limits, as I said, which is noted in blue on there, and it's a brand-new fifteen-hundred-square-foot, four-bed, three-bath manufactured home, which we were putting on a permanent foundation. However, we found out that we were unable to build that type of housing in Columbiana City limits. So that left us with needing to place it in our Fairfield Township portion of our property. And I did draw a little rectangle to the east of the parcel in Columbiana where the house would be. So essentially, we are asking for two things as a long-existing and active business in the community. We are asking for an additional tap-in for water for L and M Greenhouse, which is a property that already has water access and does use a significant amount of city water. We are requesting an access point on Duquesne Street where the, the right-of-way, it's a drive, it's like a dirt drive out to Duquesne Street is. Or if it is better to do it this way, there is an existing, existing tap-in and access point for the parcel that is within Columbiana that was turned on. We recently had it turned off, but there is an existing tap-in point for that parcel, the one-eight oh one six four six parcel. So, or just to have access to that tap-in there. And then, secondly, we are asking for an exception or variance to allow a sewer sewage tap-in. There is a manhole directly out our right-of-way there. And the structure or this request proposal does not encroach on any adjoining properties. The requested water and sewage access can be accessed directly via our right-of-way, which we already own, and the structure would be approximately sixty-five feet from Duquesne Street where the utilities are located. We would dig all of the lines, do all of the work. It would be at no cost to the city. So basically, given the information that I've just presented, we feel that this is a reasonable request. And as an existing and longstanding active business in the community, we're asking for consideration on this matter for one or both of our requests to be approved. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
All right, comments? Anyone would like to make?
The employees that will be residing, or will they be renting that space or?
No, we'll be providing it for them part of their employment. Correct, as we were, the, it's a manufactured home, and so due to understood zoning issues with that parcel, that type of home even with being on a permanent foundation is not permissible.
Yeah, I want to say, first, Amanda, you did a very good job in articulating this situation. So our dilemma is in nineteen ninety-one, our ordinance, was an ordinance passed by council to not extend or, you know, allow township or people that are outside the city to tap in without annexation. So, but if we were to annex, if this process, even if we could wave a magic wand and annex them in, the type of construction we're not allowed to have, so it's kind of a catch-twenty-two, you know, issue. So, you know, Bryce and Mark and I have been, you know, kind of racking our brains. We did try to do some, actually Amanda and Bryce and I kind of met and, you know, tried to brainstorm some solutions, but at this point, we don't, like, you know, without, without going against that ordinance, as you know, we, we, you know, have annexed them other properties in recently, and there's a few people that are, you know, thinking about annexing in, and, you know, that would, that would, that's against our ordinance to do that right now.
So just so you know, annexation would be the path that, you know, that I would recommend so that you're not violating the ordinance that's been in effect since nineteen ninety-one. Interestingly, it basically says in that ordinance that council was codifying a long-held policy of the Village of Columbiana, which was not to extend utilities without annexation. You know, in the early nineties, I was involved in some projects that I think had the benefit of understanding that ordinance and a couple of others that were passed that, you know, that a developer that wanted to annex would also be paying for the cost of the utilities. The city wasn't, the village was not going to foot the bill. So those kind of came about at the same time, so annexation would be the proper path. However, upon annexation, then you have to look at the type of structure, the district that it would be in, and would it be permissible? So Amanda is right, you might then be looking at a variance. And Amanda, the one thing that I have a concern with is, and, you know, as long as you're in Fairfield Township, it's more of their concern, not the City of Columbiana's, but looking at this, the entire picture as we're trying to discuss their path forward, then what I look at is, okay, we only allow manufactured homes, if you call them, in manufactured home parks. Then when we're looking at labor, does this then become what's considered an agricultural camp under the Ohio Revised Code? And of course, if it is, then you have to go through the Ohio Department of Health, and then you have to comply with all of, with all of those rules and regulations, both the Revised Code and the Ohio Administrative Code. So, you know, we could recommend the annexation, but then there's a couple of steps after that, the agricultural camp, and if there would be some type of variance, and I really can't say if there would or there wouldn't, but I could see a very distinct possibility. So I hate to sit here and say, well, you know, annexation's a great idea, and by the way, if it works, then you have to come back to the city and say, will this project fit? And not just the city, but the Ohio Health Department. So you've got a few steps in this, and it's kind of, you know, I'm certainly not going to sit here as the city's attorney and say, hey, if you do annexation, smooth sailing from there, because from what I'm looking at, that's just the first step.
May I speak to that for one moment, the labor camp? So we are working through a service. It's one of the largest in the nation who deals with these types of labors, and a labor camp is five or more people. We're unsure if we're going to have four or five. If we do have five, then we're very aware of.
Agricultural camp, and if you have less.
Correct. However, there still are site inspections and requirements through the health department, all of which I'm acutely aware of. I've been dealing with all of this over the last several months, so thank you for that additional information. But we are utilizing a service who handles from A to Z all, everything with the federal government to housing, to everything that you mentioned. So that, on that note, and, and I, I don't have question or concern. We simply are in need of water and sewage access for this spring season. And that is why I'm asking for the variance to be specific to one or both of the utilities, particularly given that we do have water already at L and M. I'm asking for either addition, an additional access point to our property for that water or the tap-in for that Columbiana parcel that is existing to have access to that, and then an exception to be made for the sewage.
What is that parcel zone?
R one, I think you said.
That's R two, I believe. Didn't want to freak out a turn.
And you're opposed to building a stick-built structure?
So we are not opposed. We, we got caught against time. There have been several things over the last year that have occurred to where, like, we're filing an emergency petition and filing with the Department of Labor through this. Time is not on our side, and so the manufactured home is a way for us to make this happen, to sustain our business for the spring season when we start planting at the end of January. And it is a very ni, it's a very nice, I understand the zoning, but it is a very nice home that would be on a permanent foundation.
Different definition for manufactured? Atos? Well?
I should have brought the drawings. I have all of the specs, and I did not. I don't know if Lance, you have that copy?
I have a really basic question. Does that ordinance, because I'm not familiar with it, does that ordinance even give us the authority to grant a variance? Or is it pretty much, we would have to pass a resolution or ordinance to grant such a variance?
Yeah, there, I don't see.
That's why I'm suggesting annexation, because when I look at that ordinance, it's pretty black and white. You would need to amend, in my opinion, you might need to amend the ordinance.
So it's not something we could even grant tonight?
They own property in City Limits, so if they built a stick-built structure
in City Limits.
On that piece of property.
And it, it R two, right?
I think so.
It's a multi-bedroom, I mean, it would be a five-bedroom house or something like that, basically?
I suggest them to be to contact somebody like CPC or somebody that built, proved builds the walls. And, you know.
Yeah, those guys can put stuff together pretty fast.
North Lima?
Just somebody like that, you know.
Right, we're just, we have this home and we're under, right, it's already December seventeenth, and we have this home, which we put a down payment on already.
So due to those problems, time problems, you want us to change our policy regarding providing public services to your property? Despite the fact that we're already negotiating with people right now that want our utilities, and we're telling them they have to be annexed into our community. You see a problem for us?
Well, let's.
I do, I, I mean, I do think that, you know, we are a long-existing business and participant and member of the community that has been.
For me, the biggest problem is that we don't have, we don't have a path to do that easily. And so we would have to amend an ordinance. Once we amend the ordinance, then we open up Pandora's box. So I, I would prefer the idea of, of talking about a variance to the zoning. I mean.
Which I'm fine with.
But that's, that's something I can address. That would be a planning, that would be a planning commission, right? Or would we have to address that too?
I mean, like Mark said, that would be one hoop that we can't guarantee is going to.
Right, exactly.
You know, perhaps you could talk to the Board of Health, you know, State Board of Health, and see exactly what hoops that, you know, they would, they would require too.
I just meant for the structure in town, for the structure in that, on that lot, a variance for that. I don't know, that's, this is so far outside of my area of expertise. That's why we have these guys advise us on this stuff, because it.
So it's the Department of Health who determine whether that house is permissible to be zoned?
So they just have other requirements, like those attachments that I sent you, you continue to read.
But are you talking about specifically for the work component?
No, I'm talking about the house itself.
For the zoning.
Amanda, what, okay, since you're working with this service, are they, you know, are, are they stating that if you build it in Fairfield Township, if the Department of Health does get involved, or do they get involved at all if there's less than four? Because you're right, the agricultural camp is more than two families and/or, and/or more than five or more than four. So if you're under that, because one of the things I note in reading through all of that chapter on agricultural camps and the Administrative Code seems to be the idea that there's an approval of the water and approval of the sewer.
Yes.
So what I'm wondering is, are they, you know, is your service confident that if you're in Fairfield Township, even if the center said, okay, we'll grant sewer access, is that something that would be approved if it ends up having to be considered an agricultural camp?
The city sewer you're asking? Yes.
Okay.
That's actually a preferred path to a private septic system.
Okay, even if we're in Fairfield Township, because not in the same jurisdiction?
Correct.
Okay. I, you know, again, the reason I've suggested the idea of annexation is because it's a, it's a better path other than what Mr. Souter is suggesting, which is basically a stick building, which could be considered a conditionally permitted use. In an R two.
Not sure, because it was, I mean, yeah, again, we're. What's that? I think we're so far outside of our area of expertise at this point that. Like I said, for me, the fact that we can't just simply get around, we can't grant the variance ourselves. It would have to be a path of amending the ordinance means we can't really do anything tonight anyway.
What about the water that we already do have? Are we?
You know. It's. Nobody up here, including me, can say how long the water has been there, who decided to do that. But I could assume, I don't know, if that were before nineteen ninety-one. You know, basically this pol- the ordinance in question is section ten forty oh one. Which begins with the idea annexation policy. And then it says the longstanding policy of the municipality is the same as been periodically expressed. By way of motion and otherwise in the minutes of council and other agency municipal government. Required land contiguous or adjacent to the municipality be annexed. In order to be provided with municipal utility service shall be and hereby is reaffirmed. So to me, what that basically says is, well, we had a policy. Sometimes we enforced it by way of motion and, you know. But now we're codifying it, which means we're reaffirming it and we're saying now this is our ordinance. So, you know, it basically provided for if we already had. Persons that were receiving utilities outside to basically be surcharged. So it kind of admitted, yeah, we've got people that are outside. It could have been your property, it could have been one hundred other properties. I have no idea, but it basically provided, we're going to surcharge those. And then we're not going to do this again. Because now our policy is an ordinance that says unless you annex, we won't provide you with utilities. So when it is written the way it's written. For council to go around that, they really can't just grant a variance. They are almost, not almost, they are stuck with needing to change. Which means amend that ordinance. So that's. That's one path. Even though it was done before, this, you know, again, this ordinance seems to contemplate that, yeah, we did that in the past. And I could cite other examples for you um, where it was done. But then the city said, or the village at that time said, and we're going to surcharge those and charge them a higher rate than anybody else. Now, whether that was actually done in nineteen ninety-one, I can't tell you, I wasn't in this position. But what I can tell you is now this council has in front of it. An ordinance that was passed over thirty years ago that they can change if they so choose. But until they do so, they really don't have the authority to go, they can't really find a way around it. Hence the reason I go back to the idea of the annexation. Then you are within the municipality. Then perhaps they can look at, okay, what is this type of building? And are you going to, you need this building right now? Are you going to do this next year? Would you then look at as Mr. Souter said, a stick building, something like that? So, you know, there's no real easy path. For council to just go along with. That's the reason I suggested the idea of annexation.
Uh, I just want to add to, um, because I, you've already got some services. But there's also, in our zoning, we have non-conforming uses, like uses that were there before zoning was in place. And specifically, we can't expand or, you know, those, those exist as long as they exist. And then when they're gone, they're gone. So this is the same, kind of the same idea, I think, to say, this is a non-conform, this, this existed before, so it's grandfathered in. But we can't really change it. Because it, we no longer allow it. So, um, and I, I think, for me, I would be hesitant to change that ordinance. Simply because we have so many other interested parties right now. That I, we would be opening up Pandora's box for, for future development. So that's, that would be my concern.
My thought, you, you have a water tap at your facility. And there's nothing that says that they can run water to their other structure, right? From their tab. I run water in my garage, is that, was that a legal thing to do?
We do have a tap at that parcel highlighted in blue in Columbia.
Saying this, you have to come off your existing meter to your structure in federal township, but that doesn't help you with your sewer.
There's sewer tap currently?
No.
You have something?
Yeah. Very far on the other end of the property.
So septic off the house in the back?
The septic is, there's one off of a house on the property and then there's another off of um, a pole building.
You've really stated to us what you need.
I don't think there's really anything we can do right now, except, you know, Mark, I know Mark and Lance are working with you. That ordinance really does tie our hands. So I don't think there's anything we can do. I'm sorry.
I really do appreciate your time, I took way more time than I intended to. I do appreciate the time. And everyone's input, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the manager's report, Lance and Eric.
Thanks, Mayor. We had met with um, the Placer AI, uh, it's a economic development tool that we've talked about uh, in the past. Uh, we're setting that up and hopefully can uh, start that in uh, twenty twenty-five. We think it's gonna be a, another um, tool in our toolbox as far as economic development. Uh, we attended an ODOT LPA day in Akron. And uh, there was a hundred and forty uh, people there that attended that. It was a, it was a nice event. We got to see uh, the ODOT employees that we're normally used to working with. And then um, we learned all day about um, these local, local projects um, called local, local public authority. So we basically manage the projects uh, with ODOT um, such as Fairfield Avenue. Um, Fairfield School Road and um, Lisbon Street uh, most recently. Uh, we did meet with Town Center and Associates, those are the people that uh, help us on our downtown, they're kind of a consultants. Uh, regarding some signage and zoning ordinances, just uh, look, looking ahead. Uh, this, some of the things that we may want to clean up or address in the future. And we're gonna try to um, work through planning commission and, and um, and council over the next uh. We're gonna make it a goal of twenty twenty-five to try to, try to clean some of that stuff up and, and go with some of the recommendations that uh. You know, that they suggest. We attended uh, the monthly uh, chamber meeting. Uh, we also met with uh, R cap uh, regarding some of their programs. We hosted a progress committee meeting, um, we actually held it at athletics, it was kind of cool out there. I don't know, if you haven't been out to athletics, you, you have got to get out there, it's a, it's amazing place. Uh, can't believe you're in Columbia when you're there, so uh, it was a, it was a nice uh, it was a nice meeting. And we did get a tour uh, from uh, Mr. Wardle and uh, we appreciate that. Uh, let's see, we're always talking about Omega and playing through grants, they help us get the grants and they, they team up with the county. They uh, were in town and, or in the county and they stopped by. And uh, the executive director of Omega was actually here and they spent uh. Spent some time with us and, and uh, talked about uh, some of the programs that we're, we're working on. See, we did meet with the uh, ARPA committee to discuss uh, the obligation of the remaining funds that we've not spent yet for the ARPA funds. We have a, a deadline of uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to obligate. It's a step in the process, we have to obligate it, uh, the funds by then, that's the next biggest step. We've been in a lot of um. The federal government is actually giving a lot of um, seminars and such and Zoom meetings. So um, we have, we're asking you to uh, pass emergency ordinance tonight. To um, obligate the rest of our funds and we're gonna obligate those um. During emergency legislation to uh, obligate them. And it will be for the, let's see here, gotta get the verbiage right here. They'll be obligated to government services and we will be um, looking at um, the. Basically helping the EMS fund. We do not need to spend them by uh, December thirty-first, but we have to obligate them. And then we have to report that by uh, sometime in April. And uh, we're just kind of learning through that uh, process. It's uh, it's about as fun as um, tax law, so. Um, it's, let's see, uh. As we expected, we do need to make some adjustments on additional final year-end adjustments. Uh, we placed legislation on the agenda and Kevin's here to answer any questions if we need to. But we just need to clean some things up. If you remember, we had uh, first and second readings early on and uh, we are gonna have to pass the emergency uh, to complete that. Before the end of the year. Uh, let's see, uh. We do have on the agenda kind of the next step as far as the Cochran property. Uh, in November, you authorized me to uh. To sign a uh, letter of intent, this is kind of the next process, uh. We're asking you to pass emergency ordinance to authorize city manager and, to enter into a purchase agreement. Uh, with uh, with the twenty-one railroad. This ordinance will grant the city manager authority to begin the process of acquiring that, that property. Uh, it basically, it's the next step and this will give us another thirty days of due diligence. And with the uh, option to buy the uh, property or close um, uh, by the end of March, I believe. So. That's uh, there's emergency ordinance to do that, uh, we did visit the property, uh, you know, we have a committee. And uh, we did visit the. Visit the property today, actually, it's been a long day, but uh, we're, we're just uh, doing our due diligence. The environmental aspect of it, uh, we did have um, engineer look at the phase one and phase two. And we've got uh, some recommendations and we're gonna look at that over the next week, see uh, what the next step is with that. Okay, moving on to the uh, departments, uh, we're completing hookups out at Whispering Pines on Jenny Lane. We removed the temporary service at Tractor Supply, set transformers at Arrowhead Park and started terminations. And completed Arrowhead One. Uh, Park and Cemetery, they worked with uh, wreaths across America. Uh, ceremony took place on the fourteenth and honored uh, twelve hundred veterans, laid the rest in the Columbia uh, cemetery. Got to see Skip there in the, in the, some of the images there. So uh, thanks for that, Skip. Thank you for your service, too. Uh, out in the park, uh, we have had uh, three, well, more than three fallen trees, uh. A lot of trees have been falling, especially back out at the um, the walking trail area. A few have uh, hindered the, or took down the fence for the dog park. So we're trying to make temporary fixes on the dog park fence. And we're also preemptively uh, cutting down some other trees to um. You know, prevent that from happening. Uh, Water Department completed twenty locates, uh, seventeen work orders. Did apply for another fifty thousand dollar grant, person, purchase a generator from well number eight. And we're working with a company to improve a production of one of our wells. Uh, Street Department, you hear their leaf back truck out there sucking them up. And uh, we collected five more loads of leaf bags in the last couple of weeks. Citizens are doing a really good job of uh, getting those out there. And we did uh, build the salt trucks and uh, have had to salt the roads, but uh, been pretty, pretty lucky overall. Uh, wastewater department, um, they've been working on the, testing out the new sewer out there at Arrowhead Park. Um, we did send a couple individuals for a training seminar over in Mansfield. And we um, did winterize our plow truck and soldered around the, the plants uh, as needed. And I believe that's everything there.
Okay, thanks Lance. Any questions for Lance?
Oh, I, I forgot, I'm sorry, I promised an update uh, on our wastewater uh, project. It's basically behind Sparkle, if you will, yeah, and uh, we're moving uh, up through. We're gonna, I'm gonna try to get an update on the uh, the internet tomorrow on the, on our um, our website. To uh, give the residents a kind of a timeline, especially in the Stanton area. I know it's, you know, it has been a little rough there, uh, we appreciate your patience there. I know that um, you know, emergency crews are aware that it's taking place in a, in a true emergency. We, rest assured, we will get through there, um, but um. We'll try to get you a better timeline, uh, we're moving slowly up there. So basically, we came up um, uh, Main Street, turned on the Stanton and then we're gonna head south here soon. Uh, on, along an easement and heading towards uh, Joshua, backyard of Joshua Dixon. And uh, we're doing that uh, mostly trenchless technology and you can see that we've had to dig some holes too, so. But I will get an update, uh, try to get it up there uh, tomorrow.
Thanks Lance. Uh, you've received a copy of the mayor's court report for November twenty twenty-four. You've also received a, the bill list for twelve seventeen twenty twenty-four, are there any questions on those two items? Okay, hearing none? We'll move to old business and I would entertain a motion to read all ordinances by title only.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have any call roll?
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three two six eight, second reading. An ordinance establishing dates of regularly scheduled council meetings and meetings of boards and commissions. For the county year twenty twenty-five and directing the publishing and posting of this ordinance.
Don't move.
Second. Motion is second. Do you have any call to roll?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving to new business. Uh, first of all, I would like to ask the question. Who are the two council members to the voluntary, volunteer fire department depend, dependence fund board for twenty, uh, currently?
Your honor, myself.
I thought it was you two. Okay. Well, we need a motion, uh, to, uh, I would entertain a motion to appoint two people for the year twenty twenty-five to that same. Fund board. Make a motion?
Do we want a name?
Yes.
You guys want to continue doing that? So? In that case, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to appoint John Yengus and Ted Souter to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence Fund Board for twenty twenty-five.
A second.
Motion is second. Do you have me to call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
I'm staying.
I don't think there'll be much debate about, oh, that was all carried out.
Here comes, here comes the Ohio ethics board, you're in trouble.
It's same.
Okay. I would like to read, I'd like to motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me to call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three-two-six-nine, emergency. An emergency ordinance to obligate monies received from. The state local fiscal reserve fund. SLFRF. For payment of expenses under the revenue loss eligible use category to provide governmental services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. I'm sure nobody's gonna ask me to read that again. Um, do you have any call roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me to call the roll?
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three-two-seven-zero, emergency. An emergency ordinance transferring twenty-two thousand dollars from the general fund. Seven thousand dollars to the park fund, fifteen thousand dollars to the police pension fund. All for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me to call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash. Wait a second. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm gonna start over. Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three-two-seven-one, emergency.
Are we doing it individually now, so?
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm, I apologize. I would entertain a motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Would entertain a motion to read the following. But I didn't read it, did I? I'm off filter here. I apologize. Ordinance number right here.
Yeah.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three-two-seven-one, emergency. An emergency ordinance amending appropriation ordinance twenty-four dash O dash three-two-two-two. By adding to or reducing certain funds for, all for the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me to call the roll?
Do I have a quick question? Since Kevin's sitting here. Um, Kevin, what do you need us to know on any of this?
Um. You know, it definitely helps to have the ARPA money, the company EMS, that's what I'm sure, general funds. Fairly well, and in general, I think, I think we should be okay.
Okay, the water fund was still showing red, right?
Well, I haven't made transfers, I'm gonna wait till we close it at the end of the year, but water fund, yeah, still needs little, little assistance.
Okay, is, are we better now with the new rates?
For sure, and I'm hoping twenty twenty-five, they're gonna be on their own.
Okay.
Fond retirement, special assessment, bond retirement fund will, uh, also get eliminated. We actually just sent them to, uh, special assessment, bond retirement. That negative will go away as well. I'm just waiting to the end of the year to make sure John, uh, can afford it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Do you have me to call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Motion, I'd entertain a motion to read the following ordinance as an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Do you have me to call the roll?
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-four dash O dash three-two-seven-two, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with twenty-one railroad LLC. For the purchase of certain parcels of improved real property for the future location of municipal facilities.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Now, we have discussed this. Is there anything else anybody wants to add during this motion? Okay, do you have me to call the roll?
Banner?
Yes.
Yengus?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Oh, no further, um. Direct business or new business to be discussed. I would like to take this opportunity to ask if there are any comments from anyone in the public. Either here or on the Zoom.
I just hope you all have very, very good.
Great. Thank you, Dale. Appreciate it. Any other comments? And I'll ask if there are any council, co- council comments.
This time of year, I'm reminded, uh. When I was in Florida, the lady that cut my hair on her beer in front was a little plaque and had some poly sprigs on it. And it said, three wise men. You've got to be kidding me. I'll never forget that. But I do want to wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas, safe holiday. Please enjoy it.
Any other council comments?
I'm just gonna comment and, and apologize in advance, but I saw. I saw, um, on Facebook today that it was a council member's birthday today. And I just want to wish that council member a very happy birthday. He may identify himself if he wants or otherwise.
Thank you. Well, so I don't know what we would do without his decisive humor. Placed in appropriate circumstances. Thank you, buddy. Happy birthday. I know we've worked you hard all day today, so you deserve to celebrate tomorrow too. Am I on my age or? I ain't saying anything about that. You know, I said you've worked me hard. I probably had a sleep or two there.
Which anniversary of your twenty-ninth birthday is this, by the way?
For those of you, I'm seventy-nine today. Congratulations. That's great. Any, any other comments? We can't beat those. Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.